Everybody for coming tonight. Just gonna give everybody a quick reminder. Had a few people ask that the audience is not supposed to talk. If you will, make sure to keep everything quiet. A lot of people on Facebook and all in here. And so if you ask everybody just control yourself and let us make sure we're conducting it. For you coming tonight. If everybody would bow your head, we'll say a word of prayer. Dear Father, thank you for this order today. Dear Lord, thank you for all your blessings that you've done for us and given us. We ask that you watch over the God direct us and help us make wise decisions for the city, Lord, that we will be a shining testimony for you in everything that we say and do. And thank you for all your blessings. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Thank you. Stand up for the pleasured ladies.
I request allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Do I have approval for minutes for the regular meeting of July 12th, 2022?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from our regular meeting on July 12th, 2022.
I'll second.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Millian?
Yes, I would be. I don't know that I can vote.
Okay. Backus?
Yes.
Mr. Seagres?
Hi, very good. Mrs. Carey, thank you.
Do we have approval of meeting agenda for tonight?
Mr. Mayor, can I just want to?
Yes.
Item F, Stacy Ritchie's not going to be able to be here tonight. She had a conflict come up at the last moment, so we're gonna move her to next one.
So we just need to move out. We'll leave it as is. We'll just table when we get there.
Okay. All right.
All right. Do we have approval for meeting for tonight?
I'll motion approve the meeting agenda for tonight.
I'll second it.
Mr. Millian? Mrs. Backus? Mrs. Reed? Mr. Seagres?
Thank you.
Mrs. Carey, thank you. All right. Record of community events, community events. The Downtown Revitalization Association, Mrs. Bailey?
I have with me also tonight Ms. Teresa Lot, who is a member of our board. Just so you can get to meet some of the other folks that are participating in the DDRA. Thank you again for having this opportunity. The DDRA continues our Bringing Downtown Alive Free Summer Concert Series Saturdays on the Square presented by City of Darlington. Darlington Cruisers plans to continue their monthly car shows during the concerts, and we'll have a solid group of food trucks and other vendors scheduled to attend. And it's more vendors being added every day, it seems like. Thanks to Pepsi, Fiber Industries, Belt Funeral Home, and Wilson Senior Care. And thank you to the community for your support of our efforts. The last event we had in July was a jazz concert. We had a great crowd. We just got cut off a little bit because of the rain, but it seems like everybody's enjoying the events. Got lots of food vendors, lots of, lots of good times. The slate of bands will continue with the Rick Strickland Band on August 13th. The group features several artists who are from Darlington and has, the group has recently been honored by the Carolina Beach Music Academy with 13 nominations for 2022, including Best Male and Female Vocalist, Songwriter, Instrumentalist, Song, Group, and Entertainer. So come see this talented group perform live downtown Saturday, August 13th, 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. Come early and bring a chair as the Rick Strickland Band brings a crowd from North Carolina and Myrtle Beach. The DDRA continues our monthly member breakfasts at 8:00 a.m. on the last Thursday of the month. That will be Thursday, August 25th at Taki's Diner. The meals are at no charge for members and a small $5 fee towards the meal for all others. This allows our businesses to make connections and strengthen our local economy that way. We are also having a Halloween decorating contest this year for businesses with a top prize of $1,000. The businesses don't have to be on the square or members of the DRA to participate, but we'd love to have them join us. Businesses need to register with me by October 15th to compete. They can go online to buildupdarlington.org/scare for scare on the square and download the form, or they can just give me a call and I can get it to them. The public is gonna be selecting the winners through an online survey during the last week of October in preparation for the scare on the square, which is set for the Friday before Halloween, which is October 28th, from 4:30 to 6:30. You can get this type of news directly to your phone or email at buildupdarlington.org/signup. We promote Darlington, its businesses on social media, and through its news alert system each week, and the alerts reach more than 2,700 people.
Can you tell the public, since it's on Facebook and a lot of people don't know about what DDRA does, about the grants for the facade and the structure of that?
So the DDRA since 2016 has had an improvement incentive grant available each year. Each year, the board budgets a certain amount to distribute to local businesses and property owners to fix up the outside facade, whether that's fixing windows, painting the building, or getting a new sign. We actually just approved three more grants today. I'm not gonna announce them because I haven't told those people yet. But so far, our, our projects that the grants have been connected to have improved Darlington, have been involved in $200,000 worth of improvements in town. It's a 50-50 grant, so it's a match up to $1,000. It's not a lot, but sometimes a little, every little bit helps. So that's one of the projects that we're doing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And I think the chamber of commerce, she said she's not here. Great.
She's on vacation.
All right. Citizens wishing to appear before council. Jim Vernon?
Thank you, Jim Vernon. I am here representing Darlington Country Club. I'm the general manager here at Darlington Country Club. I think I understand I kind of got caught in between that I was gonna make a request of funds from the hospitality tax. In the past, you've helped with the Southern 500 Tournament that we've held over the last, I believe this will be the 59th year in a row. We have probably 140 golfers coming from all over the southeast, Georgia, Tennessee, North Carolina, even as far away as Florida, that have come in. And you've been kind enough to help us in the past, and I understand that there's gonna be voted on a new grant committee tonight. Our tournament will be held on August 26th through 28th, so I wanted to go ahead and ask or request funds of $5,000 for support of the Southern 500. That's really all I have. Any questions of that?
The dates again, sweetheart?
August 26th, 27th, and 28th. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Comments on that? Good? Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. New business, the Darlington Pilot Club Sweet Potato Festival. Krista Abbott, what president?
Good evening. How are y'all?
Good.
Good evening. I mean, Campbell, past president of the Pilot Club. Honorable Mayor Curtis Boyd, and members of the Darlington City Councils. It is with great excitement that we prepare for the 39th Annual South Carolina Sweet Potato Festival in downtown Darlington. We are proud that our festival is the longest running festival in South Carolina, and we appreciate your continued support of the South Carolina Sweet Potato Festival throughout the years. The resources and cooperation of Darlington's Street and Sanitation Department, Darlington Police Department, and the Darlington Recreation Department are truly appreciated, along with the donations provided by the city of Darlington. The Pilot Club of Darlington is a 501(c)(3) organization providing services and assistance for others in our local community. The funds raised from the South Carolina Sweet Potato Festival are used to benefit those in our community. Pilots support the leadership development of youth through the Darlington Anchor Club, caring for families in times of need through our Pick Me Up program, and brain safety and fitness throughout our internationally award-winning program of brain miners. Teaching children as well as adults how to protect their brain for life and supplying children with bright helmets as needed. The theme for this year's festival is helmets, a no-brainer. We plan to partner with the Darlington City Police Department so that officers can give out certificates or retrieve the children that they see wearing their helmets. Funds raised from the South Carolina Sweet Potato Festival are targeted to support various causes in our local community. Some of these include the Lord Cares, the Free Medical Clinic of Darlington, youth scholarships, safety patrol belts and badges for local schools, flags for schools, breast cancer awareness, Alzheimer's, autism awareness, the Heart Association, Christmas gifts for needy children, the Kids Closet, and Camp Burton Gym, a camp for children with medical challenges, and the sponsorship of Project Lifesaver, a program to locate persons with Alzheimer's, autism, and Down Syndrome who tend to wander.
With the rising cost of supplies and advertisement for the festival, we respectfully request a donation of $5,000 to support the festival. Why? According to the Morning News, we bring over 20,000 people to the city of Darlington during this one-day festival. We feel that the Pilot Club of Darlington promotes tourism and enhances the economy in Darlington by sponsoring this event. Many local businesses benefit from having visitors to our beautiful city of Darlington. We have vendors from South Carolina, North Carolina, Tennessee, Georgia, Kentucky, Virginia, and Florida who travel to participate in our festival. The Pilot Club of Darlington invest funds on advertising the Sweet Potato Festival to encourage the crowd of 20,000 or more to attend this event in downtown Darlington. We ask for your assistance in helping us to make this event one in which we can truly give back to our community. Thank you kindly for your consideration in this manner. Questions?
I was coming.
Are we expected to, to the state? Answer this prior to the grants committee? The state is?
Yeah, I think the understanding is that this is gonna happen. The event's gonna take place before they meet, before we get them organized.
Okay. When is the event?
I was gonna say, we understand that there's gonna be a new process going in the future. In the future, we will definitely follow the new process, but if we wait for that to start this time, then we miss the Sweet Potato Festival.
When is the festival?
October 8th, second Saturday of October.
October?
Yes, ma'am.
The grants committee is not gonna meet before October? I mean, that doesn't make sense. We have it in place.
We're going to appoint the name, or you're gonna vote on the names tonight.
Right.
After that, I will constitute the group. They will get together. They will have to set their own meetings. This could go into August or early September. We just don't know if there'll be enough time to do it. After they make their recommendations, they will bring you their, their decisions, and then council will ultimately make the decisions on what to fund.
I mean, I understand.
We have not yet set a dollar amount for funding. We haven't done that either, no sir. We haven't gotten to that. This is kind of catching us in between the two, and I knew that they were coming. I didn't realize about the Southern 500, excuse me, the golf course, golf tournament.
We don't have to have an answer tonight. We just wanted to present to you, since we were called, since y'all were having a change of process, we wanted to be sure to get on the docket for y'all and to know that going forward, we will participate in the guidelines set forth by the new committee.
I don't think anybody has a problem with, with helping, because that's what we're going to do. It's if you have it and it does delay, unless you get the money in November, still, if it's approved.
A commitment is a commitment, that's right.
Absolutely.
And so that's all I want. I just, because there's so many requests.
And we want to follow the proper process as well.
And for us not to look like we're being...
Even though yours, the golf tournament vote, may be passed, it still could be set to this year.
Correct.
You just need to present it to the committee.
Right. We would, depending on the commitment from the committee will also depend on, you know, for advertising, because we do put our sponsors on the advertisement, and that level is one that it would be advertised as sponsored by the city of Darlington as well. Because we've changed our wording on our T-shirts even to say presented by the Pilot Club, because we have sponsorships, and the city of Darlington, county of Darlington, the people who sponsor us need to get that recognition as well.
Right.
So, yeah, hopefully, I think we should, the committee should be in the other...
One of the things we've got that puts us in a quandary is deciding what's gonna be the funding period, so that we have people who are coming with fall events this year who are needing funding, and they'll be coming back next year. Say we do it in January or February, and they'll be needing funding for the fall year. So we go have, this year it seems like we're gonna have to have some overlap, where we fund some things prior to being able to, to set a dollar amount and prior to being able to set out a process, just like the Darlington Country Club or the Southern 500 thing.
That's right away.
At the end of the month, this takes place on first of October.
They could approve them now, and then you just have to work with committee. But again, the committee could be again in January of next year and go and start preapproving people for the following year.
Correct. So they're gonna cut the gap, and say that this is the deadline for 2023, is that, then we will apply about that.
It still seems like we are doing, we are going an extra mile. When we said, because we've been talking about this committee now for quite a while, I just feel like we should wait and, and follow the process that we have put into motion.
That's what we're saying.
And then, and not say anything I can't, let's go, let's don't get out of, yeah, don't complicate the situation.
Yeah. We appreciate the time to be able to...
We'll always approve the council. They'll always approve the festival, for example.
We'll be happy.
So if the committee approves the Sweet Potato Festival, and they wait again until next year, then you'll always be behind eight months. Whereas, and they may start doing it in January, February, whatever else, for the prior year, do it every January, February after this year.
Right. Whenever you set the budget or whatever.
It's just because this year, since we're starting, there's just no overlap.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay.
So are they gonna get approved for two years then?
No.
They're gonna have to approve for two years.
That's fine.
The committee meets in September. They will approve people for this year. Then the committee will be, again, I'm just saying, in January, they will approve people for the, everybody will come back again and be approved for the following year.
There's, we could have a problem with functions that take place in October, in August, September, October, because even the timing to put the word out, we got to apply by such and such a date, there won't be enough time between the notice to apply, the meeting, plus meeting to approve the request, and then funding the request before those entities that are needing our funding in August, September, and October will have a chance to get funding this year. If we don't vary a little bit from the new process for the balance of 2022 to take care of the 2022 second half of the question. Do you still have that often?
I truly appreciate the comment, but when we set something, let's just follow it. My thing is, because we've been talking about this grant thing a long time, so I just said now, I mean, we might be delayed in putting it together, but we can speed the process up by saying the committee needs, because of the things that you're, that you're voicing here now, the committee needs that now that they know that they are going to serve what it's all about, that we say that you need to meet by September. At least, this is the top of August, in August you meet, and then go on, and then move on if there's no more than that. But I mean, that's just not different. I don't, I don't want us to get to begin to look like we are favoring one organization to another. So, and I think if we follow what we set up and be like that.
There may be some people who do not get funded this year.
But they will. You know they will.
Well, if we meet in a time...
And that's the committee. If we say that you need to meet, so that that won't happen, since that is a concern.
We need to have the committee's recommendations in September.
My goal, Mr. Millian, is when you vote on these names, I'll, this week I will contact them, and I will get them to meet just as soon as possible this month, and then they're gonna have to set their own rules, their guidelines, their officers, and everything else, and then I, they're gonna have to meet again, but we can get that done by September.
Well, they're gonna meet this month without any notice to the public to apply, to organize...
Well, I, I assume they're gonna meet to establish their, their rules, their protocols, their officers. They'll have an initial public meeting.
So they'll meet to establish their protocols this month in August?
And then they'll set the, the dates that they want to open it. We'll put information in the paper, on our website, and every other avenue that we can, and we'll give applicants time. I've got an application that's already created, and we'll send that out, and then in September, hopefully, I, I'm not gonna give you a definite time, because I don't know yet. They can come back, and then we'll have that meeting. They'll make a recommendation to council, and you'll vote the way you vote. But before we get to that point, and we'll have to discuss this later, you're gonna have to determine how much money you wanna put up for that year, but that's, that's the...
This is like you wanna make conditions to favor each group.
They can have more than one year.
Yes.
More to get done.
They can.
There's no rules, say they gotta meet once a month.
Again, there's a little bit, this first time, the two of y'all, for example, may be in a catch 22. You may get the money after they vote.
Right.
But then, my suggestion would be that they go ahead and meet, and they may have to meet three times. They may have to meet, it may be November, once they get the word out for everybody to come in and get your money and get your applications in, they get their applications.
Yeah.
But then they need to go ahead and do it again early the next year. So if they do it in January, February, March of next year, then they're, everybody ahead of the time can go ahead and get your money, get your applications in early.
Yes.
And they'll know how to issue it.
Yes, sir.
So that way, we are, we're following protocol, yes. All right.
So what I would do, recommend tonight, is the two entities that have come before you, I would advise, and we'll make sure that everyone knows when the applications will be accepted, I would, I would offer to them to make application at that point. Like you said, it may be after their event, but I think if they're awarded, they'll take the money.
Okay. All right. Very good.
Very good.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay. Thank you. All right. MASC Conference Rat Club, Mr. Seagres?
The theme for our recent Municipal Association Annual Meeting in Charleston was civility in government. We have experienced this or lack thereof on a national level as well as here on the local level. This council has attended several training sessions over the years on the proper manner of meetings to be conducted. We have a moderator, who is the mayor. He drives over the meetings and conducts the agenda in an orderly fashion. When I was first sworn in to council in January of 1998, I've been around here a while, y'all. Our meetings were conducted in a professional and orderly fashion. Seven members of council did not always agree, but we disagreed politely with respect and dignity. Today's council lacks that. There are constant outbursts, one will talk over another, not allowing the first person to finish his or her statement. The mayor has trouble controlling the meeting because of elevated voices and not allowing him control. There has been some name-calling, which is disrespectful, and yes, some have been threatened. This court of this council is displaying, is hurting the very people we are trying to help. Our meetings are viewed online by many people, organizations, and other government entities. Industries and retail businesses are looking for new locations, they will look elsewhere and not locate here because of the disruptive nature by this council. These companies not only look at our educational system, but they also look at the local government, the compatibility, the ability to work together, as well as the ability to work with them. Because of this lack of professionalism, these companies will locate elsewhere. Another disturbing message I received is another government entity has produced a training film from our meetings on how not to conduct a council meeting. I'll repeat that. Another government entity has produced a training film from our meetings on how not to conduct a council meeting. This is something we should not be tied up. In closing, I ask all council members to act in a professional, civilized, and respectful manner, and allow our mayor to conduct orderly and productive meetings. Our citizens will then be proud of these meetings and our council meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Seagres. The grants committee, appointments? Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Mayor, as we discussed last month, the council by resolution established a grants committee that will take city funds either through age tax or appropriated funds from the past and disperse them to eligible entities throughout the city. Each one of you has given me a person's name that you wish to be appointed. I'm gonna, I'm gonna name them now, and then I'm just gonna ask you to vote on them. Mr. Nettles appoints Lori Cavanaugh. Mr. Millian appoints Dean Sigmund. Mr. Seagres appoints Mike Sprott. Mr. Gardner appoints Dr. Andy Cohen. Ms. Reed appoints James Cooper III. Mayor Boyd appoints RuJohn Williams. And Ms. Backus appoints Gloria Heinz.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve these individuals that have been nominated by each council member to constitute the grants committee for the city of Darlington.
I second.
Mr. Seagres?
Oh, Council, read that.
Ms. Backus?
Ms. Reed? Mr. Gardner? Mr. Seagres?
I, very good. Mrs. Carey? Thank you. I said, if you will, let's try and get a vote to them and see if they can expedite possibly.
That'll be done tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, council, for doing that. Thank the citizens for understanding that we're trying to regulate everything and get another viewpoint besides just ourselves. The committee will take it back to us and make a final approval hopefully soon. All right. Out of D and R New Business, WWTP Operations Upgrade, Mr. Shurder?
West Water Treatment Plant? Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll clear a little prematurely about this. We had hoped to tonight that this, this project was completed, but this is one that you all approved last December to be completed at the West Water Treatment Plant by North American Construction Company. Once every two years, we have to backwash our, or actually dump out our filters out there that, that use our carrier water, which we use part of our effluent going through our wastewater treatment plant, to carry chlorine back to the head of the chlorine contact chamber, disinfect wastewater going in the black, black river. I almost call it the Black River. And they have to do that every two years. It costs about $7,000 a piece. We have identified an upgrade in moving the pumps that carry that water from the beginning of the chlorine contact chamber to the end of the chlorine contact chamber, and that will allow us to wash each side of the chlorine contact chamber, use those pumps to clean out the sludge that settles in there, and, and it should increase efficiency just by a huge amount. We expect five years now of those filters instead of two, and I wanted to come here and tell you that project was completed, but we had everything in place, but we found out we got some parts, other parts that we needed, and we, we didn't get right, and it might be another thirty days out, but, but that was really the only reason that we were gonna do this tonight.
This is just for informational purpose. We're not asking for any answers. This was such of a, a large project, an important project for the city, we just wanted to make it a little better. That's all. it aware, that's all.
So I have a question for the water department. Last council meeting, I asked this question, I didn't get answered, so I'm asking. We raised the water bill on citizens at the budget during our budget session, and my question then was, how much money did the water department profit from the 40% increase last year? So I'm asking that question again.
How much the water profited? We, we're not in the business of profit. We have just finished our fiscal year on June 30th, the auditors have not given us that information.
We tally our income every month, increment expense, so you're saying you don't have any idea whether we made money or lost money last year?
No, I'm saying that there are matters including depreciation and journal entries that will need to be made by professional auditors that we're not going to do here at City Hall, that will, because we have to wait, that's a part of our overall audit. And we just can't get that information yet because we don't know it, we don't know what the auditors are going to require. That will come out, it'll be in our final audit. When do they finish the audit? It'll generally be done around October, November, but it's, it's premature to give you that yet. Thank you, Mr. Scher. Thank you.
I don't think that's a good of an answer.
First reading zoning request, 200, 203 Orange Street.
Mayor and council. The property owners at 203 Orange Street, which is the CRC property from Orange Street, Pearl Street, along Garden Street, the property is zoned in two different sections. Part of it is owned general commercial and part of it is zoned R-10, which is low-density residential, which is the most stringent, most restrictive zoning district and the least restrictive zoning district. The property owners have requested that the back section of the parcel that is currently R-10 be reclassified as OR, office and residential, to allow them to cut part of the property off to sell to fund the CRC. The proposed potential uses would be compatible with the CRC and its mission. We obviously can't discuss specifics because they don't have all of those details worked out without having the plat redrawn, and they can't redraw the plat until we've rezoned. The current designation is R-10, and the front is general commercial, as is most of Pearl Street, most of what, front of Pearl Street. As I said, these are two opposite ends of the zoning district spectrum, the most restrictive and the least restrictive right next to each other. This is not typically what you do, you typically have something as a buffer zone between those two. The owners made the request to change the entire property to general commercial last year. The planning commission approved that request and then council denied it last year. The owners have waited the requisite 12 months to reapply and have made a request to change that portion to office and residential instead of general commercial, which is much stricter in terms of use. So office and residential is kind of in the middle, general commercial is very, is not as restrictive, residential 10 is very restrictive. So the, this was brought to the planning commission, and after more than two hours of debate, the planning commission could not agree on recommendations. However, per Section 10.2 of the city zoning ordinance, the request shall be deemed approved if they fail to reach decision, and then it is presented to you. And staff is recommending that council approve this change requested. It is a compromise solution between switching it from R-10 to G-City, which is very drastic, and a very reasonable request based on the discussion and debate from last year.
So if it's office residential, they can put like a tax office or something of that nature?
Which there are tax offices and, and that sort of thing. The AT&amp;T building is down that road, Edwards &amp; Jones is on Orange Street.
What would they not be allowed to put on there?
There's, you couldn't put a gas station, you couldn't put a Dollar General, those types of things.
Is there a first, like, budget minimum that they could, or maximum that they put there?
Yes, that, that's on all of our zoning districts. That, that's why they need to change the zoning district so that they can divide it and keep the CRC extending from Orange Street to Pearl Street, and the, the sale of the small piece of property will allow them to renovate the entire building.
So do they have a buyer for the small piece of property?
Uh, they have several interested parties, but with many economic development and, and legal issues, you can't really disclose those.
Well, I just remember the last time we talked about this, we asked over and over what they wanted to do with it, and it was repeatedly said, we don't know, or we're not sure yet, so I'm just trying to figure out what they may think they might be.
It is, it is an office of type use. It is appropriate for an office and residential.
So more of the office than the residential side, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Excuse me, please, if I present them with what we provided the planning committee as to tentatively what our thoughts were.
Yes, ma'am, I didn't know how much detail, they got this in their packet, actually.
Oh, they got this in their packet, okay. Well, so Ms. Nettles, if you would review the information in your packet that we provided the planning committee, that kind of touches upon what you just mentioned about our inability to offer any details at the last order.
So the answer is the same, basically, still no details, not just, basically, no real details because you don't know, is that what I'm saying?
No, we, at this time, we do, we.
Lisa, we don't have any.
Okay, Lisa, I'll go ahead, I'm sorry, I'll defer back to Lisa.
That didn't seem to be, that's why my answer.
This was in your planning, this should have been in your packet, and if it's not, I don't know. This details it in, in more clear terms, but this was based on our discussion. The concerns that were brought by the neighborhood last year that caused council to deny the request seem to be that they were concerned about it being heavy traffic and a heavy retail type of use. Office and residential kind of eliminates that problem of the, the increased traffic that you might see at a Dollar General or Walmart versus a doctor's office. And of course, there are other financial offices on, in that area. Andrews &amp; Bryant CPA is in that area, you've got Edwards &amp; Jones.
I'm really in that area, that's directly on the square.
May I tell you, did we zone the whole frontage part of Orange Street?
Yes, sir. They are unable to carve off a piece of the property based on our zoning ordinance without rezoning. And obviously, they would want something, some use that is compatible because they still want the CRC to function as a community entity for children. So they actually liked the office and residential, and it seemed like a very reasonable request to create a buffer zone. Plan commission spent more than two hours in the discussion and could come up with an answer.
And how many people were present for that meeting?
Four.
How many are all in the committee?
I, I just don't understand why there, why there is such a problem, because if it remains, if we do not act to help them in this situation and award them, it's going to stay in an area where you could, they could do anything they want, because of the, because of how it's zoned right now. So it's just such a, I don't see why we have to.
I think the request is very reasonable to, to.
The way it sounds like that, you're only putting a house on the grid.
Pretty much.
Yeah, I mean, this is historical.
So what's the difference, Lisa, between office residential and mixed commercial?
Mixed commercial is not a zoning district in our experience.
I think when we used that term, we were using it to describe office slash residential. So, yeah, so that's just, that's just jargon, yeah. Mm-hmm, but office residential is the goal.
Lisa, this is just a definition in our codes of office residential effect.
If you want to hear that. I, I feel it's a very reasonable request and, and a good compromise from going general commercial, and it does create a buffer area that is currently not existing, and I don't know why they wouldn't have put it there to start with, but that was the past. When they drew it, they, that's what they drew. Here is what the zoning ordinance says specifically about office and residential district. The OR district is intended to accommodate office institutional and residential uses in areas whose character is mixed or in transition. It is designed principally for use along major streets and subdivision borders characterized by older houses to help ameliorate the consequences of change impacting these areas and provide a transitional buffer between potentially incompatible commercial and residential development, which is exactly what we need right there.
I mean.
I don't see where the problem is, well, it's a big picture.
I mean, based on all the information.
This would be first read, yes, sir.
The requests are just simple. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the first reading zoning request for 203 Orange Street.
I'll sit in there.
Mr. Nettles?
Debating, hang on a second, please.
Mr. Millian?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I hate it, but just as I had involvement and didn't vote last year in the matter, I'm going to recuse myself on this, and I've represented the family, they're great people, met with them in my office on several occasions about CRC work that their mama had done.
Mr. Gardner?
If the property was on Pearl Street, I'd see no issue with it, it's surrounded by houses where it sits on the back, so I'm going to vote in favor of it this time, but want a little more understanding in the future. I just don't know how we're going to go about zoning our city in the future without understanding what is actually going to be placed on the property, thus why we're rezoning historical neighborhoods. This was Oak Street, we were very clear that we wanted to preserve our historical neighborhoods, but it's Orange Street, it's maybe not so clear, and I'm not sure why that is, but I'll vote in favor of it for first reading, but want a lot more further discussion and a little more education over the next month.
I think a two-story building is going on Oak Street, right?
This is a large.
That's a commercial building on Oak Street, a two-story commercial building. How is that preserving historic, just?
If you remember correctly, we voted that down previously, fought pretty hard against it, and I think through some legal loopholes, that was done differently. Am I wrong?
Either way, the building is going up.
On Orange Street.
But I'm not wrong.
It's on Orange Street.
Building is going up.
Mr. Carter, you vote yes?
I do.
Mr. Seegers? The commission could come up with a solution, I, I can't vote for the board. I'll vote yes again for tonight, so we'll further discussion, so that's four, one, two, three. Mr. Nettles?
As it's first reading, I'll vote yes for first discussion.
If anybody has opposed to it, raise further discussion so we can look into it.
I'll be happy to meet with anyone and discuss any details.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And F has been, for the SC Darlington, our virtual survey final report will be titled until next, if you cannot continue. There will be no second session for tonight. Reminder that Tuesday, September the 6th, 2022, regular monthly meeting with Darlington City Council will be at 6 o'clock again. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I will motion to adjourn, one second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.